All right. The time is on seven thirty-one and I will call the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, seven thirty meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed through all public pages?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Kedami, yes. Trustee Humphreys, yes. Trustee Coop, yes. Yes, Mr. Ray.
Here, thank you very much. And I will also recite, I'm not sure if I'm doing this in the proper order, but the land acknowledgement, which is, we acknowledge the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded traditional and ancestral homelands of native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement of non-native settlers and the ongoing injustices against native peoples. And I would now like to welcome our visitors to the library, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Will be approved?
Second.
We have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed through all public pages?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Kedami, yes. Trustee Humphreys, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Kedami, yes. Yes. President Ray.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to let us know how we're doing?
All right, we are doing great. If you looked at my librarians report, we got the answer to the questions and the comp last month about the difference between the cash and investments and fund balance is always the same in the library capital replacement fund, but it's always different on the library fund. And the reason for that is that the fund balance takes into account liabilities and assets. So for your cash and investments, that's strictly the cash. The fund balance takes into account all of those liabilities as well. And there are a couple of assets that also work for the library fund. However, the library capital replacement fund has no liabilities. So those two numbers always match. So. So yes, the one is supposed to match and the others generally does not.
And I understood that.
Yes. Yeah. And then, and I did cut in case that explanation, so it's more coherent than what I just said. Go back to the. Let's see, we are sixteen point six percent through our fiscal year. As you can see from the revenue report, we are only at one percent of revenue collected, but that is pretty typical for this time of year. You'll see things start to get posted as we move through property tax season. And then on the expenditures side, we're at thirteen point one percent. The only line that is really showing that it's almost completely spent is at eighty-five percent is line five, four, two, zero, which is our insurance other. And that is the package liability, workers' comp, et cetera, for the library. And that is paid in a one-time lump sum at the end of January every year. So that always looks like it got spent out, it was spent very quickly, but with good reason. I also want to draw your attention to the invoice edit list. The deposit for the RGW scope of work that is on tonight's agenda for approval is listed there. But if that is not approved tonight, then we can, then it will be removed from the invoices for this month. And that was all of it.
Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters?
I'll say.
We had a motion to approve the financial matters that has presented. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed through all public pages?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Kedami, yes. Trustee Humphreys, yes. Trustee Cooper, yes. President Ray.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters that's presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do you have any public comment on agenda items?
Well, your presentation is an action item later in the meeting. Okay, I will wait.
Okay, public comment on other library business. Ed.
I haven't heard from us since we were back. Paul's already. I just saw the new swan catalog online, get up today. My compliments, looks very good. I think it's very nice, easy to use. One thing I noticed on there, which offhand looks like a very positive thing, says more like this when you find books, you see more like it. This is one of these things that we see this a lot on Amazon, at least on Netflix, you see it on social media. I actually have a problem with it, it's kind of deep issue with it's more like this. And that's because what it does is it tends to steer people towards more of the same thing that they already are interested in, which tends to, I hate to say polarize, because when you look at something like books, you say similar books, it's not necessarily polarization, but it narrows people's focus and it pushes them into narrower and narrower niches. And I think one of the things that's good about libraries, that should be maybe more diverse kinds of options and looking at other things. My guess is that probably it's not something at the library you're going to go to the library for the part like this, but I'm sure you've kind of witnessed in the group that is doing that. I would suggest, very strongly suggest, that they include something that's not just more like this, but other, other things. So, you know, it could be done simply by picking whatever sort of topic that the book would be covered under and saying, here are other alternatives. And then that would give you a more diverse set of viewpoints to look at and would help broaden people's selections and reading experiences around this. And I think that would be the longer alternative.
That kind of fits with what we talk about librarians are trained to be, not bias, right? Library to train to, someone says they want a book on whatever, to show them a vast number of books. So that, that kind of falls in line with the training.
So I think it's fairly simple to make that kind of an adjustment, but nobody thinks of it because the natural tendency is to say, do this, but it creates a feedback loop and it's not healthy.
Well, and one of the things to be aware of in the swan catalog, we are one of the one hundred libraries using that catalog again. We will take this suggestion, but I will let you know that we may or may not be able to do that on a library by library basis. There are some things in the catalog that we can't turn on and off, that we can change. And there are some things in the catalog that are just, that's the way it works and you have to look at it.
Well, it'd be good if Steve did that for the group, right? And this kind of applies naturally to here, it's, I think, as well. And I would be happy to offer to go there and get rid of the face on the table.
I was just thinking about, because I use the library recently for travel, and I would want things that are directly related to where I'm going. So you'd almost have to make the distinction between those sorts of books and books that have, I kind of understand what you're getting at.
I think we have sort of two roles, results that show. These are similar, these are others that can also be interesting because.
Would you rather take cruise? I should.
I think, I think that's super interesting. And I actually, if you haven't read it, the book called Outlookings of Oppression by Sophia Noble, I just returned it. So I got it back from the system. And it talks about exactly what you're talking about. And one of the suggestions that the author makes is actually, in addition to changing the outlook, you know, which may be very difficult to achieve, what you're saying, we're one of many, but also to help people, you know, ordinary people who are using these systems, understand when that is happening. So understanding that it's not completely neutral to your point or not, like there are people behind all of that. There are things, you know, there are people steering you or things steering you towards a direction. Because we as users, consumers can understand that better, then we can at least recognize when that's happening to us. So I wonder if that's, you know, in terms of programming, I think we do a lot of educational offerings around how to use the library and how to see out information. This is a really interesting topic, just helping people, like media leaders, like how do you, how do you decide? How do you know that in fact this steer you toward this more, more narrow viewpoint? And you could be exposed to cruises or other things. So it's super, I'm fascinated by all that and I can change your network.
We don't have to try to mean this, but I would like to do this.
Yeah, I was going to, can you answer this?
All right, any additional, thank you, Ed, any additional public comment on other library business? Okay, we're now on to agenda item eight A, EDI project phase two proposal from RGW Consulting.
Well, it's hard for me to believe that we're actually at the end of our phase one scope of work. Our equity strategic plan is nearly ready. We're hoping to bring that before the board in April. But that also means that we are at the end of that first scope of work. So this project proposal from RGW is for phase two. It wouldn't have been year two, but we've kind of dragged through year one, so it's all ready, large. But that's all right, things are going well. But this is to do the next step. This is the implementation of, to help support staff, the leadership team, board, through the implementation of the equity strategic plan and continuation of the work that is being done with our affinity groups and with the executive leadership coaching.
And who, yeah, it's like, who ultimately is responsible for that strategic plan?
That will be part of our, it will be folded in to our larger strategic plan eventually. And what it will be kind of parsed out in the same way. You may remember that in the previous strategic plan, that we had assigned various staff members to be in person on particular act, goal or activity. We attached dates to those, so this will function very much the same way.
No, I wasn't getting at like who specifically from the library. I was getting at more like, is this something Rashida's doing with, like, is it something that for now, I think, committee that you're involved with? This is, do you think who's, who's ultimately?
Yes, so our equity advisory team would, will continue. And their role will change a little bit. The, the first thing, one of the first things that will happen under the new equity strategic plan, and I don't see this part going anywhere, is a reviewing our policies, procedures, job descriptions, et cetera, with an equity lens. And some of that team development is teaching us how to do that. And then making sure that we go through it the first time and then making sure that staff have the tools to continue that work moving forward.
So ultimately, it's the library, like, how much did Rashida still evolve in the development of, like, the final step of the equity strategic plan? I mean, is she still, what is she, because you're saying that we're, we're in the process of this will be presented next month. Is she, are there things that she'll be doing, collaborating with the library now and next month when this is presented?
Yes, she is working with the equity advisory team to, on that, on that draft document. We are also working with the equity advisory team on some job postings. They've, they've done some look at, looking at job postings for us. And then there's some other little things going on with the, the equity team that, yeah, she was. And she continues her work with coaching some of our staff and with the support of our affinity groups.
But what I was really getting at, getting at is that, and I didn't go back and look at our original agreement, but was that something that was essentially supposed to be a finished product? Or was it, I just wasn't, I didn't remember like what her role was in developing the equity strategic plan. And then where I was then going with this is that if we're not done with that yet, like, why are we re-engaging before we're finished? Like, let's see what the finished product is before we re-engage.
Well, and the scope of work for that does basically tie up with the equity strategic plan. But there, that portion of the work. And then there are these leadership development meetings that she's having with the management team, with specific staff members, meeting with the affinity groups and providing support to them, that we have run through our whole contract on that.
Right, and that's, that's, that's kind of where I was hoping. Ed, it's like, let's assume we didn't have that equity strategic plan, would she still essentially, you know, satisfy her obligations? Okay, that's really what I was more getting at, okay.
We're, we've, we've done everything with the exception of that final deliverable.
Okay.
So I have a question that maybe ties into maybe what you're saying, because I'm curious about, so this, this next project, I presume that's like number two years into our engagement with RGW, is that right?
Yes. Well, this will be our second. This will make it, what, two and a half years?
It'll be the second.
Yes. Yes, it is a mission.
Okay, sorry, what year, so I guess I'm thinking, you know, if we're, this is something we've done for a while. In terms of sustainability, is this something we're planning on continuing to set aside a certain amount of money for others and getting RGW board and saying, oh, well, we're going to have training provided by different boards and now staff are taking on these missions and need a budget, kind of needed price tag associated with this thing they want to drive. Is that kind of, I'm wondering about kind of long-term sustainability in terms of turning the capability back over to the library. So it's like, yes, library staff, if now we're taking this, it's theirs to do what they need to do.
And that is the goal of the, by the end of year two, the idea would be that we are able as an organization to sustain our momentum and to continue training new staff in how to, there may be a training component there, but that would be a awful separate.
Continuing education.
They continue in education.
And like that two-year length to shift the culture.
Yes.
Because in, in a one-year timeframe, it's just impossible because there's so many other things you're doing. And then two years, I feel that you need to kind of, to kind of help sustain it and sort of like, I don't know what is I'm looking for, but like a boost. Yeah, sort of, and help shift sort of everything. Yeah. Just the, I think with consultants, there are so many fires that have to be put out and then you kind of got all the fires settled. Now you're just kind of focused on.
I didn't see that funding bill then, you know.
Right, right.
You know, because you're a consultant, you know, and it's a big engagement, but it's, it's a turnkey's old work. So it's like, it's your, your big now, it's ready to grow.
I see a little bit, kind of like implementing a new financial plan, where you hire advisors, accountants to help you put together a new financial plan. Now it's done, buy. Rather than that, you retain the, them as an advisor, as to help you implement it and set some milestones and audit along the way to make sure that you're still on track. Because until we've done it once, we've gone through it, we're not sure we're on target. And this gives a sort of an external expert, if you will, audit. And part of it is to teach us how to audit ourselves. And since we've done this both for ourselves and partially as an example for the rest of the community, we've got to, right? And we've got to make sure that a year from now, we're still on target. And that's the reason I say this is.
Well, and I'm not arguing against this. I'm just, I'm trying to understand what the, what that point is.
I think I'm explaining it to myself as much as anybody else is, putting it into words has to be.
No, and I think I, I agree with the various questions, and in part, I'll agree with your point of two-year process. And then, and then, which I agree with the take, I mean, this takes, you know, and it was crazy, first year.
Right. I mean, ideally, it would be, it would be a few months ahead, like, you know, you could have.
But, but I also agree with Dave, I think this, I'm in agreement with your point of, you have the initial boost and then, but, but maybe in year three, you don't need the full boost. You need like the modest, you know, just making sure kind of things are on track and, you know, just, you know, it's more of a, it could be an arrangement, but it would be to a much lesser extent.
It could be some, something that's more like onboarding new staff, onboarding new board members or, you know, once every few months training, we need training on this specific thing, right? That could be like the year three thing that, but I think that, you know, when, when you all do get to see the, the strategic plan, the, the EDI strategic plan, let's see, there's so many things that are, that are like targets. And it's, it would be nice to say, to Jay's point, like, oh, we, we put this in our plan, but we weren't able to reach this. Is this something we can do or can we, or we need more help figuring out how to do this?
Right.
I think that's, that's where RGW would be able to sort of.
Coaching, auditing, to, which I see, she's done most of it, teaching.
Right.
We've heard the words, no, we've got to walk, walk.
I think, I'm sorry. No, I'm just, I think right now, I think, I think started to answer the question that I had, and that was that, so looking at the objectives, it doesn't look like the board necessarily has much slated for this portion of the, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Beyond the approval of the strategic plan, and then there are some things within the strategic plan that, that are related to the board and what the board will be doing, quite not as direct. And one of the things that we are looking at is onboarding of new trustees and what kind of training those trustees will have. Or from whatever source we decide is our, our onboarding.
I mean, I guess the question is like, how does the board best determine that this engagement was successful? I mean, there's no tangible metrics, like, if it's like the financial situation, what's the best way that we can, that be accountable for improved levels?
For, so for, are you talking about the, the successful conclusion of the last scope of work?
Yes, and this one, I guess.
Yeah. So for the last scope of work, that was very much focused on board, staff and leadership development. So as you know, RGW even did a series of trainings with you, a series of trainings with, with full staff, a series of trainings with the management team. They can, we got our BIPOC affinity group off the ground. And one of the things that they are also doing is some coaching with a couple of our BIPOC staff members who are leaders in this area, just to give them support. Because when we started this process, we have a whole lot of support for our BIPOC folks who are giving a lot of emotional energy toward this, this work. They are also supporting the, that staff member who is leading our BIPOC affinity group and providing some training within that, that group for all of our BIPOC staff. And then, of course, this equity strategic plan. We put together the equity advisory team, as you probably remember, it's made up of staff, made up of community members, including Janelle Robinson from Holts North Door and Pastor Andy Boynovich from First United Methodist. And then we also have Trustee Barb Halloway, who is one of our members, and myself. And this group has come together and done some training, has worked together and then started really working on this equity strategic plan. And that has been the meat of this process, is that strategic plan.
Was there any way to get feedback from the staff? This was talking throughout, like, what was the staff's feedback, the training, the managers?
The, the training for staff was by and large very positively reviewed. I know a lot of staff were very much preferred the, to be able to participate live. You know, those who had to watch the recorded version, it just kind of loses something when you're not as interactive. But I will say that Rashida's training received very, very positive feedback from the staff.
So then let's go to side five, one of my questions is how, how the grant received. And then also, I guess, related to the training in this next year of engaging everybody is, you know, addition to this, okay, no more feel-good about topic. How, how do we, how do we know, like, so for example, one of the phrases is to become proficient in auditing policies, et cetera. So presumably now, if you ask people involved in this process, they would say, are you on scale one-ten, are you proficient? They'd be like, I'm not, too, like, okay. Presumably, you know, you just tell, well, and you get to the end of this and you ask them, yeah, and they say, oh, now I'm getting it, I'm like, I got this. So that's kind of what I'm wondering about is, it's not, because this one, you're right, it's to your point, like, it's not, the deliverables aren't as tangible. They're like, this equity strategic plan is being handed over, there's training, it got from this check, check. This is a little bit more like, do you feel like you all can take this? Do you think the advisory group is ready to just roll, can you start initiatives on, with, under your own scheme? And I'm, I'm just thinking about like next time, next, this year, next, this year.
This year.
Yes, you know, what, what will we be asking ourselves about people, where are we right now? And I hope you build that into the process and, you know, this is a, you know, a pretty high level for multiple, but I would really love to see that discussion, maybe not at this, maybe even in the previous, before we start talking about, maybe changing or designing their contract, to understand what are, what are the results, or like, what are we talking about in terms of SaaS comfort level and their ability to have these discussions and feel, you know, feel like they're making a positive contribution to the AI world here. It's true, I know, it's like something like, how do you, how do you measure effectiveness of pushing policy? I would imagine, I haven't seen this, that it's strategic plan, which is probably something.
There's, yeah, there's a lot of evaluations and benchmarks built in, a lot of requests for data, data.
Policy audits that are referred to, you know, actually going through the policy book, page by page. And we're going to do that, me, you are going to do that. And we're going to look over your shoulder and more important, Rashida's going to look over your shoulder. And that's where the coaching piece comes in. And I think a lot of the work is going to be thrown in that process, because that's going to convert philosophy to reality. And we're actually going to, one of the things that has been so illuminating to me is the subtle things that, you know, I'm advised, that I am. And the subtle things that I let slip out, that I don't, that I need to have pointed out to me. And going through that policy book is going to occur a lot of those kinds of things for all of us. And, and it will be an easy one. And once that's done, we're going to be able to fly.
And I really think of, of this phase two as our training goals. We're, we're starting out on our equity strategic plan with training goals. And by the end of this phase two scope of work, the training goals should come off.
Oh, we know what we're going to be.
Yes.
Let's do that, like, some of the areas that should come off.
That's right.
You know, we don't want to be that here.
We'll, we'll, we'll have to go back to. Well, we'll have to go back to, to, well, to go back to Chris's point. And I, I feel, um, it would seem like uncomfortable, but like, you know, I'm only gonna get the benefit of this month and the next month of whatever this training will be, and the four people will be here, and two new board members, and so, I mean, I think there are some questions, and then there's also two new board members, and so, do I want to be the one voting for a contract that's going to extend, you know, for a twelve-month period? So I, and that was one of my concerns.
But do I want to be part of, like, stopping that moment?
No, I know, I know.
Because I, this is what I'm thinking.
Well, that's, that's why I think from my perspective, I really, um, I don't want to stop doing that, but I also, at the same time, I think, to a certain extent, for, I want to make the right decision at this moment in time, but at the same time, it's a, the four of you are gonna, are gonna have the benefit of this much more than I will.
Yeah, but you have the history, you have the perspective of being here since day one of this project, and I think that's invaluable to the rest of us, so I mean, I have a problem with that.
I, I also think that we, as a collective board, have, have made a decision, before you made your decision, so like, as today's point, that we, this was the, this was the direction we wanted to take, as a, as a board, as a library, to be leaders in our community, and that's not changing whether you're sitting in that position or you're in community or in the library, right? So if, if that's the direction that we want our library to move in, that's the direction we want our library to move in. So I think that, that it would make sense that we want to continue this work, right? So I, I, I don't want you to sell yourself short, I think just because you're leading here two months, that you shouldn't be part of this decision, because you are still a patron of the community, you still live in this community, and you've been here for, and the number of years you've been here.
Well, I mean, I did think about that, that, that a new person doesn't have any effect, Dave's point, but the history and how we got to where we are, so. And I appreciate it. I feel special. Of course, we, we hope you're gonna still be a cheerleader.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what I have.
I know, I will definitely do that.
Give it our due sort of.
I'm not, we need to extend the period of time that we can talk as patrons. I tend to.
For sure. Um, the, the other thing, um, to keep in mind is that we do not know when those appointments will be made further. And as we saw with Swatman's reappointment, the process can sometimes take longer.
All right, so we, we have discussed this agenda item, are there any additional thoughts or comments? Or do we have a motion to approve the EDI project phase two proposal from RGW Consulting?
I'm to approve. I think that's your going to. I'm like, I'm probably not so late, too.
Also, I, okay, we have a motion to approve the EDI project phase two proposal from RGW Consulting. It has been seconded, Caitlin, can you see the role of the audience?
Trustee Jordan, yes. Trustee Hannah, yes. Trustee Humphrey, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Cynthia, yes.
Yes, thank you very much, we have approved the EDI project phase two proposal from RGW Consulting. Now we're on to a wonderful agenda item, the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance Memorial Garden donation.
Sue Farley is here to address the board from the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance.
Hi, um, we just said, right?
I'm very important.
So I'm Sue Farley, I, um, am a member, and Ken's also, as a representative here from, um, he's the president, of the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance, and also your local, um, garden library gardener, so.
Well, you're extraordinary.
I'm a master gardener, so, but it's also a big hobby of mine, uh, doing native plants, which is what the emphasis has been out there. Um, and taking that, um, it's come to our wish that we would like to, as Dick and she saw, plant a memorial bush in the garden walk area where there has been a tree removed that, uh, was moved, removed by the library last year. Um, so there's a big open spot, um, and, uh, we would like to put that, uh, we would like to purchase this, um, bush, a native bush, to be in honor of our former mayor, Ben Achievers. And I know his, her, her husband, Lyle, is, um, very happy with that, um, Curtis Walk Forest Corner. I would also be sprucing up that whole area because it's, uh, needs a little love, and, uh, be adding a lot more of native plants, uh, to enlighten that area, and make it more attractive, not only for people to walk through and notice, and be questioning and wanting to learn about the plants, but also to, um, draw in more native insects and such, that, uh, this downtown area, which the library is in the middle of, to make it more, um, comfortable and green, which is my big focus. As we were hoping that we would purchase, as the committee, um, the bush from the, uh, I, I work a lot with the Forest Preserve Group, um, I'm looking at like three bushes, but I'm leaning toward one, called the button bush, I don't know if anyone's had that before. It kind of has white flowers that look like spoon, you know, like guns. They just pop up on this little thing, and they look kind of, um, like from the space, and they last a long time, and it's a very airy, very natural bush, um, for that area. I'm also looking at a dogwood, and I'm purveying. These just ideas were based on where that area is, it's semi-shaped, does take some water, so I'm trying to do that. We would also hope to have a very simple ceremony over there after I get the areas set up. I thought of it twofold, um, basically being that Betty, Mayor, former Betty Mayor, Mayor Achievers was actually the mayor during the expansion of the library, which I thought was really cool. I've been here since I was eighty-three, I've lived in Dallas, so I've seen it expand and enjoyed it with my kids. I also thought that having a ceremony over there would draw more focus on what the garden walk is. And I know the foundation is probably still selling bricks, but we really haven't focused on that. And I thought, um, let's educate and get that out there more, and by just enhancing the whole area, that would really be helpful, because though it's on the website, I just don't think people understand. It, it's been since, what, nineteen ninety-five that they really focused on doing that? And I think that would just kind of enlighten that whole area as, as, as a more positive step, it's heavily used. So, uh, that was kind of my idea, uh, I think that by the time we get the bush in and plant to make it look very attractive, we were talking more like August and September, but we'd be working with a date, obviously with Lyle and, uh, the board and everybody. Um, the other area is that a plaque would be suggested to be put in, and I know I talked to Julie. There are three different types of plaques in that area already. The statue has a plaque that's on with stone, there is a plaque against the wall, it's only about that big, but it's actually mounted against the wall, that's been covered by all these bushes all these years. Um, and then there's another one more in the center area by the sidewalk. So, uh, we were thinking that maybe we could, uh, pay for that fifty-fifty with the library board covering part of it, we might cover, and then cover fifty percent of it. We wanted to maintain and figure out if the library wanted to be consistent, um, if they had a vendor, or if we also had some vendors, because you've done plaques for, uh, other people within the community. What, you know, we would take weeks.
I'd be a safe one.
Well, I mean, and, but the idea is, I think, to make it consistent, because I know that, that's important, and I noticed it was just, that's our whole issue, is to make it more consistent out there. So, um, those were kind of the areas I was gonna focus on, and obviously continuing, I've always, already started trying, planning things there that should take right away in the spring here, but, uh, over to any questions that you might have, or ideas, or feedback, or opinions on our idea.
Well, Sue, I think it's a great idea.
I just think it's amazing. You mentioned the different plaques, we, we do need some consistency here. I think the plaque that's on the wall, I think it was the first one, that was there before the garden really happened.
And I'm not even sure that we even know who or when there was on those plaques, because it's been so long since they were installed. Yeah. Because it's been a long time, and, and those were all here before I was came into them, any idea?
I have some really old files.
The garden walk with the April files, right?
Well, well, that's almost Canada. Like, the original bricks that were purchased and all of that, um, so I can look back and see if there's anything in there.
We shouldn't get too hard.
Yeah.
Man, too close.
And my suggestion is, is I've already gone around the whole library the last week and a half, trimmed down all the dead stuff. The grasses that were planted by the statue have just taken over, because there are lights actually there, that, uh, you know, like solar lights, and I would, you know, get that removed so that we could plant more of the native attractive plants that continue the theme of, you know, like, false dragon head, or, you know, sunflower, things that bring in seasonal things all year long for people to be questioning and saying, what is that, can I do that at home? Everything that is easily accessible, so.
I really love the idea of doing like a reintroduction to the fat area, because I'm a New York Downton resident, and I'd love, that would be a really fun family activity to kind of understand that.
If I may, I just want to jump in with a couple of other points, so the, so Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance is a local environmental and historic preservation group, just a volunteer group. We, you know, sponsor lectures and wildflower walks, and we make donations to support, uh, educational programs and buying the woods for first graders, and things like, that's the kind of thing that we do. We, um, have also been in the, you know, in the business of honoring people who made a contribution to the community in an environmental sense, and, uh, we recently placed a plaque, which we have yet to dedicate, but it's coming up, to Nana Nula, who was the Public Works Director for a long time, passed away a few years ago, and, uh, she, um, and she did a lot of green stuff in the village, so there were a lot, she sponsored a lot of, and ran a lot of green initiatives, so, and she was always very good about working with us, so we wanted to do something to honor her, so we kept the village planting a tree, and we put a little plaque on it to honor her, and it just mentions a couple of things about her environmental, you know, and, and efforts at making the village sustainable and environmentally, you know, green, so, we'd probably be looking for a message along those lines. Again, Betty was part of the process of saving the woods in the first place, um, and, and probably something that we'd want to mention, but yeah, we could always, I don't know, we're good in terms of wording, obviously she had a big role at the library as well. So, um, and yeah, we're sort of open to negotiation in terms of how you want to do the plaque, who does the plaque, um, you know, and how it's made.
I think that is a good point.
Julie, dialogue.
Consistency, uh, I don't want the plaque to be the first thing to see, but, so. I just think that it is a wonderful idea, I'm probably the only one here who actually, well, I shouldn't say that, but remembers Betty really well. Quite frankly, she's the reason I'm here. She got me involved in village affairs before I even landed. And she said, yeah, I better, better do this stuff. And I frequently have looked back a second for living, and I still remember that so, so much. And it's, you know, fantastic, just a couple of years ago. And I think it's, I think it's time we recognize her. Mayor Barnett has also, uh, chosen to recommend, if you missed it, recommend to the, to the village council that the, the village council chambers in the new building to be constructed will be named after Betty Achievers. I mean, that's a recommendation, it's not a deal yet, we're sure of that, but, and so, it's, it's, it's time, she was the first one there, she was there for sixteen years, she's served on her job for many more years than that. And, uh, she was a big fan of the library.
Yeah, the big push for the expansion, having lived here during all that time myself. So, I mean, I think it would be a nice balance combined with enhancing and educating, because I think it's kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit, the wide memorial walkways there, and what, what those bricks that people just push their strollers over actually are, you know.
And I think you're right, that, you know, I, when I was on the foundation, I think only a couple of bricks a year were being sold. And it's just because people know they're there.
That's my thought, just really emphasize it so we can work all together at that point.
It's time to refresh that. Any additional action?
Yes, we need to accept the donation, according to our, our policy, donations to the library be accepted by the board, so.
I'll be happy to do that. We, we, why not, yeah, we accept the donation of the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance in honor of Betty Achievers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance Memorial Garden donation, it has been seconded. Caitlin, can you see the role of the audience?
Trustee Jordan, yes. Trustee Hannah, yes. Trustee Humphrey, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Cynthia, yes. President Craver.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
It's going to be beautiful.
Thank you, Sue.
I plan on continuing down on Curtis, because we need to, like, make it a little more refreshed, there's, there's a goal, it's just, you know, only physically do so.
So much.
That.
Yes, and it take me back to the next slide.
Yes, the agenda item eight C, the Baby Tree Experts Tree Donation, I'm noticing a theme when you're.
Yes, so Baby Tree Experts are the ones who removed the trees that had been diseased and needed to, to leave, and when they did that last fall, they said that they would be interested in donating a tree to replace that, the one that was removed, and that's in this bed right out here by the, um, forest parking lot. It's also the one that Sue Farley worked on with our Girl Scouts over in that area. So, um, you know, it's all in keeping with the theme, as a matter of fact, Sue consulted on which type of tree we should accept from them, and we are going with the American born bean, and, uh, there would also be a plaque associated with that. We will, there is a single annual packet that will not be what actually winds up there, because again, it does not match anything. So, we will, we will coordinate and make sure that, that the plaques all go together nicely.
Tell me a little bit more precisely where this is going to go.
Um, if you just went out the.
Here, just want to walk over and look.
So the park.
Walk the ramp.
Uh, no, actually, it's right here on the parking lot, if you go up the stairs and that whole little area where you see.
It's, it's, it's up close to the building.
It's up close to the building, and, uh, so when you park in the fifteen-minute parking spots, it's right next to it, and that's the whole one quarter for like ten feet all along, and then all along the edge of the parking was all planted last year by that fifth grade Pierce Downer group with me, who still probably had worked in it, so.
That, that, that also, I mean, she's, I think, like, it's like, it's something about you, the forest, having interest in parking lot, or something like that. I'm picturing that out.
Right, and so there would be, the tree would be in the center, which will work really nice with the building, and it's a native tree, and it's not gonna get so big that you worry about the building, that's the key.
So, I'm, I'm curious, so in that spot there, I, I literally saw, I remember the dimensions of it, is there enough space there for the roots to spread out sufficiently for root volume? Because I know.
Yes, because they took.
Twice as much as the canopy of a tree, this is how the tree's extended, that would be like here, I'd be sitting here, you know, that's.
Well, um, when you're outside there, they took down four trees, actually, and there are like bushes there that could also like be removed for that native, um, so there is plenty of room for that particular tree. It's just, the placement of it, it, there's plenty of space, and the native. Um, it's just, the placement of it, it, there's plenty of space and the native.
It turns on angry, especially because of the.
Right, right, so.
I don't trust baby tree for that. I shall, I trust Sue Farley for that.
So, but that would be, like, I looked at the options and suggestions and I kind of came back and, and researching suggested that one, um, just because I think it does work better with the roots. It is important to understand the drip line and all that. That is not have a water area. That is us, you'd have to name the water that up there. So that is something to also take into consideration for a new tree. Yes, it wouldn't care.
We have a motion to approve the baby tree experts tree donation.
I would need to approve the baby tree experts tree donation. I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the baby tree experts tree donation that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trusty Jordan, yes, trusty Jen, yes, trusty mom, please.
Yes.
Trusty, please, yes, President Taylor.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the baby tree experts tree donation. We're now on to agenda item nine A, the COVID-nineteen response phase reopening plan as presented.
Can't we just.
Are we done? Are we all?
Are we done? Yes. Take it out.
This is gonna be the last time we do that.
The end is.
Yeah, I know.
Can we just say goodbye?
Yeah.
Just say, we should.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we have a motion to approve the COVID-nineteen response phase reopening plan as presented. Uh, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Trusty Jordan, yes, trusty Jen, yes, trusty mom, please, trusty, yes, trusty mom, please.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item nine A, COVID-nineteen response phase reopening plan as presented. We're now on to the library director's report.
And I will just highlight the fact that by, um, March twenty-eighth, we will have rolled back all of our COVID precautions. So, um, masks will no longer be required in children's programs as of the twenty-eighth of this month. So, um, fingers crossed, that means our mask. Uh, area that is still affected is the children's play areas that we have not, um, brought everything back. Those are slowly returning. Um, the, the toys that are more focused on individual play have started returning. The computers are back. Part of the relaunch of the play cafe that has been rethemed is also bringing on the fact that Ian has had, um, problems recently. And so, um, he had been making really great progress in there, but we weren't gonna reopen it anytime soon. So he, they just marked it off and he went and worked on the electrical relay panel. And, oh, the new tables arrived. If anyone has been into the children's department or upstairs to see the new tables. Also, the old tables are for sale, so if anybody is interested.
Just do something, go out the door.
In a table, we have many, many to sell you, so. We are doing very well, however, on the sale of those tables. So fingers crossed that we can get those all out of here in a, uh, in a timely fashion. We basically have to have them all out by Tuesday. So we're hoping that people will continue to buy them throughout the weekend and we'll get them out here. Um, we have, we've had a little, uh, little staff exodus in the access services department. Um, we are now open for the access services manager and the cataloging librarian position. Um, Jen has been traded from admin back to access services for the unspecified amount of time until we hire a new manager. Um, thankfully, she had just finished up the IPLAR, the new manuals for our manager on duty and, um, building operations monitor behind that, that manual that she'd been working on. So a couple of things have all kind of, and big projects just ended, so thankfully she has the capacity to take this on. Um, so we shall see how that all shakes out. Um, yeah, we're very, very happy that Jen is the former manager in that department and able and willing to step in and take care of that for us. We have a whole bunch of staff that are currently at the Public Library Association conference in Portland, so they are all, um, out. That has been interesting for those of us who are still here. Um, we, we've had all sorts of, uh, people who are not usually manager on duty, say in the evenings, being manager on duty in the evenings. Shout out to Maximo Gamaro, our assistant manager in the IT department, who has been, um, really, who has taken about half of the week as manager on duty. He's doing a couple of nights and Saturday for us, so yay, Max. And, um, and also I want to highlight that in this month's Library Journal magazine, there is an article, Anti-Heat Statements, How and Why to Write One for Your Library, by Ben McGarry and Cindy Tree. So shout out to those two for their wonder. It is a fantastic article. Um, it is behind a cake wall, unless you look through your article.
That I kind of play around and we just.
You're dodging it. Which is why I didn't send one. Uh, let's see, I, I was gonna say about the equity strategic plan draft, so look for that coming. And then I just wanted to mention, um, that our partnership with Midwest Soaring Foundation continues and they did a program on braided sweetgrass, um, here in the library earlier this month that went beautifully. And we are so happy for, to have our partnership with them.
Thank you. We're now on to agenda item eleven, trusty comments and requests for information. We have any trusty comments or requests for information?
I have a question. Julie, are people signing up where they used to be? Do you see the numbers of patrons coming in for these like onsite events? The same as they used to be, like, feeling like it's taking a while to get back in a little bit.
It's coming back. We are still, um, they, we are still limiting some of the kids' programs. Um, that will go away by the end of the month. Also, we have found that some programs, virtual seems to be more of what people are looking for. A lot of our, like, the, um, uh, computer instruction, uh, programs, those trainings are not in demand for in-person anymore. It's the, it's really more about virtual. So, yes, some things are coming back really well and some things may stay virtual forever now. Um, the, the other thing, uh, that I wanted to note on virtual programming is our, um, our partnership, the Illinois Libraries Present that is doing those large author events have been very well attended and are really popular. And that has given us access to a whole range of authors through the virtual platform that we never could have offered those kinds of programs in the first place.
Kind of got the J-Boss.
We couldn't get J-Boss in this office in the Downers Grove Library, it was a little.
And before the pandemic, we probably wouldn't even get our constituents to stare at a computer screen for that kind of program. And that's one of the positive things from the pandemic, or a new way to provide information. Any other short comments, Chrisa?
I had a comment and a question. I also have a question. I was curious, so it's great that so many of our staff are attending the conference. Well, um, and when they return, they can actually share what important sessions they've seen and all of that with their colleagues.
Generally, um, what has happened is those staff come back and they share a, like, synopsis of what they went to and what they learned with, um, all staff. So that's, that's our usual practice.
My comment was, of course, there's always lots of great topics about, a lot of public facing stuff you do with KPI work and all that. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate hearing about some of the behind the scenes innovations that are happening. It's just things that help, I think, improve staff engagement, communication and also all the operational stuff. So like the Aspen movie television, that's so exciting. I'm excited about that. So, yeah. Yeah, that's great. It's been, then it's been a while. But, um, I can't even shout me through it. Like, as of two days ago, it's actually fully working out, which is awesome, pretty cool, so. And so I came up with a board recap meeting, I thought that was really interesting when I was young. So I did hear about that, that was, um, and of course all the stuff you have, you know, the electric lifts, all of that, the elevators. I mean, that's, not stuff that we shout out a lot about some stuff, but I'm, I'm just really, I bet all, that's all innovation. Innovation is a problem, so I see it, I kind of appreciate it.
Caitlin gets the perseverance award.
And gray hair.
I always talk too much, but a couple of things. One is, just glance at the calendar, remind it that, and remind it I'm working my tail off time. The Rotary Grove Fest will occur in person, in, right out here, right all over downtown. The street fair will return to Main Street. Restaurants are gonna retract briefly for that few days and then extend back to the street. It will be at the stage right out here in Parkland. Very soon, we will begin recruiting volunteers to help with that. If you recall, we put on that festival with about three hundred and fifty volunteers from the community who can, by working at the festival, earn money for their not-for-profit organizations. And so that will be up on the website very soon, keep track of that. A lot of things, well, one other thing is, um, coming, another thing that's going to be happening in June is Pride Month. And, uh, the village is going to again declare the month of June as Pride Month in Downers Grove. And there will be a number of activities. And the public library is, um, helping very creatively with some of the planning on that, like they did last year. And so acknowledging that, thanking for that, we mentioned that West Soaring is not, it's not Pride, but it's another kind of thing that the library does in the community to go beyond just posts, you know. So, um, that's happening and I guess we need to also announce that there's had more words next month perhaps. But, uh, I'm, for the president, we'll be leaving us after the end of April. As I say, we're hoping to have some more words for that next month, but I'm just hoping that it go unnoticed and at the same time to figure out some way to urge the village government who appoints library board members, to appoint someone. Because, um, we need to have more than four library trustees. That is a bare minimum for them. We all have to be here, we all have to, we have to serve the health and, um, so on, so on. But I think that, but you should have gotten already, there's more.
Thank you. The additional trusty comments or requests for information. But I will move to agenda item number twelve and adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.